All right, let's continue on with 6B. Mike?
This is the second reading of a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, rezoning approximately 4.6 plus or minus acres from the two-family conservation TFC-2 zoning designation to a residential plan development, RPD zoning designation, to develop up to 42 dwelling units located at 11035, 11089, 11113, 11125 Dean Street. 36-47-25-B4-00064.0010, Benita Springs, Florida, 34135, and providing for an effective date.
Good evening, council. We will get rid of those strap numbers going forward, don't worry. Mary Thornburg, Community Development. This is the Dean Street project, which had your first reading two weeks ago. Previously, this case came before you in April, and then this case further went on to mediation. Do we need to be sworn in, Derek?
Yes, for this one. And anyone who's here to present or testify on the record today, whether you're the applicant, the staff, or any members of the public, please stand and be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you. We did go through our presentation last time, but I will just do the highlighted key points of what has changed in this request. Before I do, I do want to point out that this case was advertised in accordance with Florida statutes. We also sent courtesy notices to the interested parties at the previous hearings. I will acknowledge that there was a discrepancy with the signs that were posted. Those were quickly corrected as soon as that was made or brought to our attention. Based on the turnout, it looks like they received the memo as well. So that's wonderful. The changes on the master consta plan in front of you include a reduced density from 48 to 42 residential units. They are not providing the sidewalk along Matheson Avenue. The amenity center is relocated further into the site with restrictions on pickleball and other racket sports to prevent those noise ordinance violations. There is a revised deviation request from the 10-foot separation between structures to 15 feet between structures. There's a revised parking layout to provide more onsite parking closer to residential units at a minimum width of eight feet and 22 feet length. The units abutting Dean Street will provide front-facing facades along Dean Street, and the relocation of the structures allows for the preservation of additional heritage trees. The applicant is here, and I will let them further present or as you'd like to proceed.
Mary, did you say they weren't doing a sidewalk on Matheson, or they are doing?
They are now providing it.
They are now providing?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members. For the record, Noel Davies with the Law Firm of Davies-Duke. On behalf of the applicant, Sagamore 955 RDF LLC. I know you're all familiar with this project and with this site, as I mentioned last time. Again, we want to thank you, Councilman Fullick. We want to thank your city staff, City Manager Hunter, Community Development Director Dolmer, your city attorneys, Mr. Rooney, and also Special Outside Counsel, Mr. Theriak, for a cooperative and productive full-day mediation on this matter. We believe the mediated settlement agreement addresses your concerns from back in April as well as the concerns of the public. My client has made meaningful concessions to get us to this mediated settlement agreement. We conceded on the units, dropped them down to 42 from 48. We also conceded on the building separation, which increased from 10 feet to 15 feet. Quite frankly, I think my client wishes he made these concessions back in April before that hearing. Hindsight is 2020, of course. He regrets not doing that back then. It took the mediation process for him to realize that candidly, so we're here this evening with those meaningful concessions incorporated into the settlement agreement that is in your backup for this evening's item. We apologize for not doing that in April. We do appreciate the feedback and the comments that we received on both the density and the building separation items, which were the two key issues. We have listened. We're glad we were able to put this settlement agreement together that memorializes those concessions in a legally enforceable way. With that, I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you have. Again, we're very appreciative of your time this evening, for the opportunity to be here, for the opportunity to collaborate with the city on the mediation process, and I'm happy to answer your questions. Thank you very much, council members.
Do we have any questions?
I think so.
All right. I just have one. The maximum density that was allowed, I believe, was higher than the 48. What was it?
54 under your comprehensive plan.
So 54 was allowed, we're down to 42 now.
Yes, sir.
Jim?
Yeah, I apologize, my newness in terms of the process in this mediation thing. I'd just like to get some clarification from you, Derek, in terms of this mediation was to... What is the result of what we have to do with this mediation? Is this just another new formal proposal, zoning deviation?
We're going through the... So the mediation was conducted under the Florida Land Use Environmental Dispute Resolution Act, and so that was enacted a number of years ago by the legislature in order to create some breathing room, essentially an escape valve after a denial of a project or a code enforcement action, so that before the parties would gear up into litigation, it could take many years, there would be an opportunity to conduct a non-binding mediation and go through a process to determine if their issues could be addressed.
Okay.
And so we're going through the formal process of the rezoning again, hearing the recommended settlement on that, in order to make sure that, as Mr. Davies pointed out, that those conditions are formally adopted in the order.
Okay. I just want to clarify that that was a non-binding. The second question I had was, after this was agreed to, was there another presentation in the community as to what it's going to be?
No, sir. So that's not contemplated as part of the Florida Land Use and Environmental Dispute Resolution Act, what we tried to do. So all the full professionals on my client's side were in the room virtually over Zoom that day, a certified mediator with experience in land use matters, and then the pertinent representatives from the city. And the goal that day when we started was to take the consideration that we heard from the neighborhood meetings in the past, from the prior hearings on this item, incorporate those into our discussions and into the negotiation that's contemplated by the mediation process. We heard from city staff, we heard from, you know, the mediator in participating with respect to, you know, what those concerns were, how can we best incorporate them into a settlement agreement in advance of this evening? And we worked hard and went back and forth all day on that, and that resulted in the settlement agreement that's before you.
Okay. So essentially, once we got this agreed to, there hasn't been a discussion with the public as to what's being discussed tonight?
There's no requirement to do that, sir.
Okay.
But yes, factually, that's an accurate statement.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Nigel, good.
Being as you all chose me, thanks again. One of the things I'd like to say, I was surprised, after our last meeting, I was assuming I'd get a lot of feedback. I only had one call from someone who said that we made a mistake. I did get three calls from people who said, "Well, at least you got something." That was basically the consensus. And I think it's, again, the fact that you all were willing to work with us and got beat up for eight hours, more or less.
All right, we'll open it up to public comment, and we have registered speakers.
We have 11 submitted slips. Caroline Fissinger, and she'll be followed by Diana Walker.
I'm Diana.
Okay, we'll move on to Diana.
Hello there, we meet again. I'm not sure why I'm standing here. It sounds like there's been an agreement made already, and we maybe moot what I want to say. But on April 2 of this year, this chamber was full of members of our community. Not so much now, because I think they've kind of gone to bed. We are your neighbors, and we are your constituency, and we vote for you. We all expressed our grave concerns and opposition about this project and changing the existing TFC-2 zoning to RPD. This council voted the zone change down. The zoning commission voted this down. We felt like you heard us. We are the community. We thought you heard us. Now the developer's back for another bite at the apple. Shaving off a few units of the rendering doesn't change the fundamental issue that this density brings impacts on our community. The same issues of snarled traffic, parking overflow, floodwater drainage, and safety on the corner of Dean and Matheson prevail today. One other concern is if this zone change occurs, who else will come? Who else will want to put high density on other vacant lots on Dean Street? Can the infrastructure support that type of thing? One comes today, another comes tomorrow. There are additional vacant lots along Dean Street that could be exploited. The infrastructure cannot support every available lot to be developed similarly. Please do not let this set as a standard, a precedent. Our opposition to this zone change has always been about population density. Even 42 units would be 84 cars, 168 souls. I suspect the dimensions of the garages are sized more for Mini Coopers than for big Ford F-250 vehicles driven by the very working folks that this developer purportedly wants to target. So I don't see how two parking spaces per unit could fly there. After the first community meeting over at the fire station, the developer came to my home looking to understand why there was such an opposition to the zoning change. It's always been because of the crushing density. As our discussion concluded, I asked him this question: Is this the type of project you and your neighbors would want in your spacious and tranquil neighborhood in Naples? He wouldn't or couldn't answer the question. I can only guess his answer would have been no, but he didn't want to say it out loud. Not sure. The city of Benita Springs will get an increase in tax revenue. The developer will get a huge profit and move on back to Naples. After all the dust settles and everything is done, we will still be here, bearing consequences intended or unintended of this ill-advised zoning change. We are here again as your constituency, asking again for a no vote on this zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deirdre Flint, and she'll be followed by Frederick Leeloo.
Hello, kudos to you. I can't believe you do this every month. Okay, so thank you so much. Twice a month, okay. Good thing I didn't go into politics. Okay, my name is Deirdre Flint, and I live on Harold Street. And the motto for Benita Springs leads with small-town charm. The committee members who came before you had a vision which became reality and made old Benita Springs charming indeed. Behind you is a mural which showcases three very special things in Benita, including the Imperial River and Benita Elementary, and there is no trace on that mural of any building looking remotely like any of them that are proposed tonight, and I'm going to bet we won't be making space on that mural for one of the many complexes that are currently breaking ground. So my neighborhood. While many of the houses in my neighborhood are ranch houses from the 1960s and 1970s, they're still different from each other, from the degree of upkeep to the occupants inside to the flags that fly outside our doors. Coming from Philadelphia, it would be a stretch for me to consider Lee County diverse, but I do reside in the small pocket that is unique in that it is one of the only areas in Lee County where the ethnic majority is Hispanic. The surrounding block group maps range from 45% to 65%. Less than a mile away in the various gated communities, that percentage falls to 5% or less. I did not move to this neighborhood by accident. I chose my adorable little money pit on purpose. The guy who sold it to me had turned down a couple of offers because he didn't want developers to treat it as a teardown. So it was on the market for a while because no one in their right mind would want it. If I wanted to spend a half a million dollars on a gorgeous house with cathedral ceilings and an adequate fuse box, I would have. Instead, I actively chose my neighborhood, sprinkled with big houses and little houses, beautifully landscaped lawns and lawns not so beautifully landscaped. We have our neighbors who use food banks. We have successful business owners. We have runaway chicken. We had a runaway goat, but that's not part of zoning, so no goat. The goat's gone. Anyway, I believe that all that I've mentioned is what gives Benita Springs its small-town charm and not Happy Heron Hideaway or insert planned community name here. Diversity of income and culture and ethnicity is what gives us the Mayan cafe instead of Applebee's. It gives us El Gran Taco Loco instead of Panera. Diversity and you guys, you people who have voted to hold on to small-town charm is what made it. And everybody's jealous. Everybody's jealous. They all want to live here. This complex doesn't fit here. I hold the developer in the highest regard. He donates a lot of time and money to some wonderful causes that I respect, but he came from New York City in 2020, buying land in 2023, hoping to squeeze these houses onto this place, and this is just not the neighborhood for it. Even though, again, I hold him in the highest respect, I'm sure he's a great guy, but maybe build it in Naples, let's keep Benita Springs the majestic and magical place that it is. Thank you so much.
Frederick Leeloo, and he'll be followed by Benjamin Leeloo.
Good evening. Thank you very much for voting no the first time. I guess I'm not sure why I'm here again, because I guess it's all over again, the same thing. Dito, as my neighbors, I would have said the same thing. However, I live across the street, and actually, I'm not understanding, because this project is on Dean Street, but I live on Matheson Avenue, and I see an exit or an entrance on Madison Avenue, so I'm very confused because this project is Dean Street. I guess they wanted to make such a big, you know, place, and they want to, they need two exits. So normally, this was supposed to be like maybe eight, nine, maybe 16 houses, but obviously it's 56, down to 42, you know? It's a lot. When you know how many houses we have in this small lot, two acres normally was supposed to be one house. Somebody wanted to buy it and didn't buy it because it didn't happen. So 4.6 acres. And when you look at all those houses here, if we go to Madison Avenue, you go to the right of that where the new street was developed, you could see there's not even like 12 houses. So this project has more houses than the three streets who goes in Madison Avenue when you take a right. So there's a lot of them. I know then there's going to be a problem for water, because my house was underwater as well. So I know he's going to do a great job for the water, but I would like to make sure, and if he can actually, if he does a project, and if he said yes, obviously, you know, make sure, then I can go after him if the water goes in my house, because, you know, the flow of that driveway is going to go directly to my house, pretty much. So I will vote no for it, but I guess, again, it's in your hands. So, you know, please do the best you can do, but obviously, you know, again, I will say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Benjamin Leeloo, and he'll be followed by John Conard.
Hi, thank you for your time. Immediately when I was shown this picture, I was reminded of what I saw in parts of Philadelphia, which immediately resembles the projects. And that has provided nothing beautiful for Philadelphia, as far as I have seen. And personally, I don't see the garden for each one of these residents. And if each family has no garden, how can you expect the residents that live here to respect the gardens for the public? I say this because of what I've seen in Philadelphia with overpopulation and ideas for affordable housing, but affordable to whom is the real question? As stated just before, about an acreage or two acreage, you can do a beautiful gift to the rest of the community with, but with such a small portion here, what is each person able to provide? If each one of these houses was one settlement, I mean, I could be more okay with that, but you want to split each one of these houses into two families? You want people to... I mean, you want me to expect also with the detention center for the water that you can dig a trench and not destroy the roots of those old trees? I honestly don't expect that to happen. So I'm not against more people being here. I love people. I love having more people in the community, but if each person doesn't have a little portion for themselves, then, I mean, I couldn't see myself living here. And I would propose the question whether you would consider yourselves to live in an establishment like this. And if that's no, I don't see how you would vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Conard, and he'll be followed by Al Baric.
All right, Al, you're up.
Hi, Al Baric again. Thank you for your time, and thank you for all that you guys do. The last time, at the last meeting, I did meet with the developer. I complimented him on the style of those homes, and I just want him to know, we're not against him or his success. We're against the density, and we just don't feel that this is a substantial reduction in density from the last plan. We're still, the same issues are still here. I'm going to just try to read my letter. "This proposed high-density project threatens the heart of our single-family neighborhood, one of the last enclaves free from restrictive associations, where residents cherish their freedom. This will not prevent urban sprawl. Because we're geographically limited to the east and to the west, most people that live here commute to work away from downtown, as most of my neighbors do. This is not affordable housing. It increases safety risks, strains emergency services and possible evacuations, increases pedestrian traffic hazards, overloads our water, sewer, roads, and utilities, does not provide proportional upgrades, and changes the area's character and livability. We're outside the zoning, the downtown zoning, and this overdevelopment offers no real economic upside. I believe the developer will thrive regardless with these prime lots that he's purchased." And another point is, please don't let the lawsuits, threats course your judgment. Neighbors have overwhelmingly rejected the zoning change. The zoning department said no. This council has already voted no, demanding a substantial unit reduction. Yet, the developer has refused meaningful compromise. Changing the zoning could set a dangerous precedent for our area. Please stand with us and reject it again to protect what makes our neighborhood special. Thanks. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Al.
William Norris, and he'll be followed by Dale Stubbs.
He went home.
Are you Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Pardon me?
He went home.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Dale Stubbs, and I've lived in Benita Springs for over 41 years, and in the community I live in now for over 30 years. We have a beautiful community. The kids play in the street. They ride their bikes. They do whatever they want, their skateboards. And there's a mixture of retired, there's a mixture of everybody. And you just go up and down Dean Street from one end to the other, drive Matheson from one end to the other, and look, if you open your eyes, look, it's all built out. There's this one big lot that's left, and you're going to put this monstrosity in there that is going to flood our neighborhood with people we don't want. We own our road, but we can't hardly trespass people from coming in. So they'll be riding their bikes, and I'm not against kids. We have kids in our neighborhood. But Dean Street is heavy pedestrian usage. The school's on Dean Street. The kids walk to school. They ride their bikes on the sidewalk. And we're just going to put... Ride down Matheson, ride down Dean Street. Try to picture that in your community. We don't live in the gated communities. We don't, you know, we're just regular people, and we're getting tired of getting... When I moved here, there was whispers of, "We got to get a handle on development." But every time a developer comes around with money, it'll be okay. It'll be okay. And this won't be okay. You're going to ruin our neighborhood. And I've lived in Benita for over 41 years. I think I like it, you know? I think so. But I don't like this, and I wish you'd think for the common people. The common, this is going to affect so many common people. And I'm not, we need the common people. We vote, we do things, but this is not for... Ride up and down Dean, take a ride, look, and picture that there. It doesn't fit anywhere. It doesn't fit anywhere in any of our neighborhoods. We can't get out on the main roads when season's in. We drive down, we go east to go west, and we sit at the traffic light for four light changes to be able to turn on Beach Road. Go to the end of Dean Street on the west end and try to take a left. You're playing suicide. And with the traffic. And we deal with it. We go out of our neighborhood, and we're just going to pile more? It doesn't make any sense. And my neighbors feel so. This was put on the back burner, so a lot of people that wanted to speak are not here now. You know, we were last. We weren't the gated, we weren't the whatever, the important stuff. And I just wish you'd open your eyes and think from our perspective that something could be done with that lot that would fit more into the neighborhood. I guess that's it.
Thank you.
Hiram Seaboo, apologies if I mispronounced that, to be followed by Joseph Walcott.
Hi, I'm Seaboo. We just moved in, and to our surprise, a week after moving in, we see the zoning notifications. We moved here because of what it is, and that's not what we saw when we moved in. To us, it just does not fit. So please, keep it to what it is. We just bought here because of what we saw. That's not not look like what we saw before. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph Walcott.
Hello, everybody. My name is Joseph Walcott. I live at 10910 Orange Wood Drive, right around the corner from the proposed site here. I'm right around the corner from the proposed site here. In April, we fought against this, and it was turned down. So thank you very much for that. I left that meeting feeling so empowered and confident in my local government, and it was amazing. I'm here again today, and I feel slighted, in a sense, by both the developers and the city council, that we went from forty-eight units to twenty-two units. That, to me, is not much of a change. All the same problems that were presented then will still take effect. After listening to all the people that supported the first measure that we were talking on today, almost all of the yay people were talking about the property values and how it would help those communities down Benita Beach Road, and how it would help raise their property values. So this will not do that for our community. This will have a negative effect on the property values and everybody in this room who owns a home. Again, we talked about these rezonings, and to me, this is, this boils down to a business buying a lot because they can afford it in our residential neighborhood with the sole purpose of making money. They don't care about who lives there. They don't care about who lives in the neighborhood. The developer just wants to make money. And they will put as many units as you will accept in there. So I urge you to please have them bring it down from forty-two units. I have heard a lot of times that this will be affordable housing, and that it's meant for the workers and people that live downtown. The only thing that I have not seen is what they will be offering these for. They keep saying affordable. It's going to go with the rate. Well, looking at those Dean Street apartments, those are not, I couldn't afford those, and I'm not a downtown worker. I walk my dog down Matheson every single day. I'm dodging bikes. Cars run the stop sign at Ragsdale and Matheson. They drive extremely fast. We'll be adding the cars to the road, and not only that, if this truly is affordable housing, you'll have a majority of those people on bicycles as well. Even more on the sidewalks, and I'm constantly pulling my dog off to the side just to get out of the way of them. It's been brought up about that traffic on Dean. I do not drive down Dean Street. If I am going to Benita Beach Road from my house on Orange Wood, I take Ragsdale to the roundabout and go south, because I'll never try to take a left at Dean Street and forty, Old Forty-One. Lastly, my daughter's bus stop is on Dean Street, Dean and Lime. The increased traffic, increased bikes, increased people, you know, this many in one space. It's just potential problems written all over it. And, you know, I just urge you all to listen to every single one of us that has stood up here today and said, "Please vote no on this proposed plan." And I'm here asking you to do the same. Please vote no on this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker slip.
Okay. Any public comment that didn't put in a slip on this item, come on up. And you may form a line too, to keep it going faster.
Kevin Doughty, I live at one one zero nine three Orange Wood Drive. Council, I was not sworn in. Can I get sworn in real fast? Apologize. Yes, sir. And one of the reasons why I did not stand earlier to get sworn in, because I wasn't going to speak. I am a licensed professional civil engineer in the area. Like I said, I live on Orange Wood. I work for Bowman Consulting Group. And when this project came around the first time, I wanted to, I came to see what it was about, but I wasn't going to speak because I don't want to be against development, because that's my job, is to do exactly this. And, but I'm here today to speak because I'm also a father. I'm a father of two. My wife is pregnant with our third. And the traffic, because I take this intersection every day to get to work. The traffic that I see every day is, it scares me. I don't want to walk on Dean with my, on Matheson with my boys because of how fast the traffic already is. Couple weeks ago, we were on Ragsdale on our bikes on the sidewalk, which is a five-foot sidewalk. Shortly after we left, I went to go get tacos, Taco Tuesday, best at Maria's. And already, the intersection was shut off, or there was a road on Matheson that was shut off no more than five or ten minutes after I was walking on that sidewalk with my boys because of an accident, that I looked and the cars were on the sidewalk. They could have hit me or my children, and it scares me, and I no longer want to walk that way with my boys on Ragsdale when they're this young, because it's hard to keep track of them. And so with these additional vehicles, I just continued, I just see that as being a continuous problem. You've got the new elementary, you've got the renovations to the elementary school coming. You're going to have more students there. There's going to be walking. And it just, it concerns me that we're going to have all these additional cars at this intersection going through. There's already concerns of speeding because the Dean Street itself already has the dynamic speed limit signs. That's, they're put there because obviously people are already speeding. We don't have speed bumps yet. No one wants those, but that could be where it's coming if all these additional residents don't abide by the speed limits. Often when I go to work, police are always parked at that intersection to catch those blowing through the stop sign. So why would we be adding more fuel to the fire to increase this risk and the safety of our children? So I urge you to please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Council. Zachary Smith. I live on Dean Street, right across from the proposed project. I would echo the same comments of all my neighbors. This should continue to match the rest of the neighborhood and be single-family homes or individual duplexes per each parcel, not this packed complex. There is the argument that it does match existing projects in the neighborhood, but those projects are on the outskirts of the neighborhood, on Terry and Old Forty-One, not in the heart of the neighborhood. Was that for me?
No.
I just started. They keep saying that it's going to be affordable housing. We all know it's not going to be. But let's assume they're double-occupied, boyfriend-girlfriend, husband-wife, roommate and friend. You start adding children. We know the housing rates right now. You start adding roommates with their girlfriend. We can go anywhere from forty-two to one hundred and sixty tenants in these properties. Everybody needs a car in Southwest Florida because we have terrible public transit. So we're looking at cars that don't fit on this site. We obviously have the traffic issues, the parking issues. You've heard my neighbors. I'm going to bring up a slightly different point, which is, if you've already made up your mind, and this is going to happen, can we at least do smart development? There is not enough parking on this site. Learn from the lessons of the past. Look at what Waterline, Mosaic, whatever name, I think it's Waterline now, Dean Street and Old Forty-One. The neighborhood does not have enough parking spots for their tenants. They are overflowing onto Felts, onto Front, onto Dean. There's not enough parking. If you look at the businesses that are guaranteed parking in that development, they are now parking on Kyle Moran's empty lot. Those businesses don't have parking. Where are those, where are those customers going to park when Kyle develops that lot? We're going to do the same thing a couple blocks down in this neighborhood. We do not have enough parking for them. We need to learn from the mistake we made with Waterline. They need to provide enough parking for their tenants. I don't think this development should go here at all, but if you're going to approve it, can we please make sure it makes sense and doesn't become a burden to the community? Let's, you know, look at this strategically, please, I beg. And those are my comments. Thank you all very much for everything you do.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Amber Dykstra. I'm also off Orange Wood Drive. I'm just kind of echoing what all my neighbors just said. It doesn't quite fit in that area. I would love to have new neighbors, have more people around. I'm a teacher. I love kids. But just having it right there, that much density, that's kind of my main concern. It's how many people are going to be in that small, relatively small field. And I get, we need low-income housing. We do need that. I don't have an issue with it even being there. It's just how many people they're trying to fit in that little field. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Phoebe Umshide. I live up with Tangilo Terrace, and I used to live in Fort Lauderdale too. I know where Galeria is. It's a mess down there. I also have lived in our house for about seventeen years, me and my husband. We moved there hoping to fill it with kids. Well, unfortunately, we can't have kids, so we are now enjoying our house. We're enjoying that community as like a really good family neighborhood. And it's really nice to be able to go home and feel good about going home and know my neighbors. We're literally going to have neighbors stacked on top of each other. There's going to be, who knows how many people, really. And I know last time they did a selling point with regards to keeping Benita Springers in Benita. Well, they can't guarantee where they're going to live. They can't guarantee where they're going to only live there for six months, or a year, or where they're going to work, or, you know, hey, we're going to live in Benita, we're working in Benita, Benita's going to be beautiful with all these Benita Springers. Well, we don't know who's going to live there. It doesn't matter if it's affordable or if it's not affordable. Somebody's going to want to buy it because people need housing. I understand there's going to be traffic. That's just going to be all the time. You can't really do anything about that. Traffic's going to be bad no matter where you go. But I worry about the infrastructure. I worry about the streets. I worry about the more recycling being done, more garbage trucks, more mess. Once they start this construction, there's going to be a humongous mess. Who's going to get that residue? You know, they can pretty it up and make it all nice and sweet and shiny, and then they get to leave. And we're staying there. And we have to pick up all the pieces of what our neighborhood used to be. So I would please ask that you vote no. Just keep our neighborhood nice. Keep it as it is. We really look out for each other, and we don't want this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Luke Umshide. I live on Tangilo Terrace. I've heard a lot of really good points. Some are personal, some are very local to who, the individual, some are on the community side. I work as a project manager. I've been doing it actually ten years today, condo and home construction and remodeling. I love this, this development. I look at this, and I actually told them last time, I said, "I'd love to live there." But in HR, there's a term called "good fit." This is not a good fit for this community, this area. There, there's, it's a four-point-six acre plat with a density of six-hundred percent over what you all were fighting for in the previous discussion. I mean, you, that, the one that came before us had historical and mitigating circumstances that actually, actually would encourage development, and you were fighting to keep that density down, to keep things down. What I'm hoping for is that, the integrity, and I've seen the integrity in all of y'all. Just in this small, little sample set that I've seen, I've seen that integrity in where you act, the way you are. Before you voted no, and I would like to see that integrity continue this evening, and the zoning to be no on this development.
Thank you. Any other public comment that hasn't spoken already? All right, Al, applicant, any rebuttal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple quick clarifications that I've got to do for the record, and then a brief rebuttal. Certainly respect and appreciate the comments from the public. A couple clarifications. I think someone said the zoning department said no. That's not correct. Defer to your staff, but I believe we heard from staff that they are recommending approval of the settlement agreement, which includes the concessions set forth therein. The other item I wanted to clarify is, this is, this property does have existing entitlements today, right? It is zoned TFC two. It's governed by a future land use category, as set forth in your comprehensive plan for fifty-four units. We were at forty-eight back in April, and we've reduced that to forty-two as part of the mediation process. So all due respect to the public, you know, appreciate their concerns. Again, we worked hard during the mediation process to address those concerns. We've done what you've asked us to do. We've done what they've asked us to do. Those changes are significant. They mitigate the concerns that have been raised, and they do so in a meaningful way. We were asked to reduce the units. We did that, and we did a significant reduction of that. We were asked to increase the building separation. We did that, and we did a significant increase. The TFC two zoning has seven-and-a-half-foot side yard setbacks. When we were here in April, it was at ten feet for building separation. We are at the fifteen feet, the same as what is set forth in the TFC two zoning. The changes that we've made, the comments that we've received, all of this is what is governed by and set forth in the statute that governs the mediation process. It's important that the parties work together, that they cooperate in good faith, and do so in a way that makes sense for both sides. And as I said at the beginning, the purpose of that was to take seriously, and I defer to the representatives of the city that were there with us that full day, including Councilmember Fullick. We worked hard that day. We didn't try to just take one particular comment into consideration. We tried to do our best to globally incorporate all of the comments that we've heard and all of the feedback that we've had from the public hearing process to date. The two most significant ones that were raised over and over were units and building separation. We made meaningful concessions to each of those two categories. There were additional concessions that were made as well, but those were the two critical ones. And those are the ones that candidly were hardest to change. They weren't changed in April. They were changed as part of the mediation process, and they've been memorialized in the settlement agreement that's before you this evening. With that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions from any of you, and we respectfully request that you approve the settlement agreement this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Comments, questions?
I make a motion to deny the application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
I guess roll call.
Mayor Gibson.
No.
Councilmember Corey.
No.
Wait, no, against the, he voted, so you're voting in favor of canceling?
There's a motion, motion and a second to deny.
Deny, okay.
Councilmember Corey.
No.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
I do want to thank everyone for all their time they spent on this. I know it was a lot of work, and I appreciate it, but with all my heart, I just, I can't vote for it, so no.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
I want to make sure.
I want, I want to vote. I vote against the no.
Voting yay is to deny. Voting no is to, is to approve.
Oh, then I wanted to vote against. I want to approve the project.
So, so, Councilwoman Carr, you'd be voting no.
I want to vote in favor of the project.
Right, then you would vote against the motion.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute.
Well, see, this is, this is, the motion was to deny. Therefore, a vote in favor of the motion would deny the project.
All right, then let's vote.
Shall I just?
Vote no.
Yeah, let's, do you want to, let's restart. So again, a motion in favor of the motion is aye to deny.
Mayor Gibson.
No.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
No.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
No.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Motion carries four to three.
No, you. Well, I'm going with that.
Ms., Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Clerk, I think there's some confusion clearly from the public. I mean, I'm a little confused myself as to, as to what the vote is.
The vote carried to deny the rezoning. It's four-three to deny it.
That's right. Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, we appreciate your time.
What's Laura doing?
I don't know. All right, uh.
Can we restore regular order, please?
Yep, uh, Laura, moving on to the next, uh, item. Six C.
This is the second reading of a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida. Resoning approximately 10 plus or minus acres from the commercial plan development CPD zoning designation to a commercial plan development CPD zoning designation. To develop up to six buildings with a maximum of 39,500 square feet of commercial uses, 80,000 square feet of self-storage slash mini warehouse uses, and 70,000 square feet of light industrial uses. Located at 25211 Old 41 Road, strap number 22 dash 47 dash 25 dash B1 dash 00002.4010. Benita Springs, Florida, 34135, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Mary Tonworth, Community Development. Uh, you did hear this presentation last time for Old 41 CPD. Staff does recommend approval and the applicant is in agreement with the conditions outlined in the memorandum provided to you. Since that hearing, the applicant did meet with Councilman Purdon and perhaps other council members, and I will let them explain if they've made any proposed changes since that point. But I'll go ahead and let them speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone intend to speak on this item, including any members of the public? Do you refer and tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Good evening, uh, Mayor Gibson and members of City Council. With respect to your time, I ask for your direction. We prepared, we're prepared with our entire presentation here today. We have all of our experts, or we can highlight for you some of the responses to your comments in the initial, um, in the initial hearing. And for the record, my name is Francesca Pasidoma, I'm sorry. I am trying to be as, as brief as you may need us to be in respect of your time.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Um, I, I think you made the full presentation last time, so if you just wanna do an abbreviated, unless anybody else up here would like the full?
If you'd address the points.
Yeah, a- anything that's changed or, you know, just the abbreviated, uh?
Absolutely. Um, and Ms. Kulak will go through, um, the changes primarily, including, uh, we, we were requested a job approximation, we'll address that. We did wanna clarify something with respect to I'm getting there? Okay. So we did wanna clarify one thing. We'll show you a couple additional renderings that we hope shape this project for you from a design perspective. However, to set that predicate for Ms. Kulak, all of these buildings are designed in a uniform cohesive fashion. So we have commercial fronting, we have some light industrial, and we have high-end vehicle storage units. But it's not your typical industrial, your typical self-storage. I, I, I need to note that for the record because I think that's important for you to understand. When you come into the site, all of the buildings are going to be very cohesive. It's a beautiful project in our opinion. In addition, um, with respect to a comment made by Councilmember Purdon, self-storage doesn't seem to be an active use. That's intentional. We, we actually securitize that area with a gate that ties in, um, and a fence feature that ties in to the external fence feature. You see it in your packets, I hope, uh, distributed by the clerk, that members of the public adjacent to us wanted a lower activity on that quadrant. So what we did is we, we blended in public comments, and you'll see that in the presentation highlights that are in front of you today. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Kulak.
Good evening, Council, Patty Kulak. For the record, on behalf of the applicant, I will just highlight in the conscience of time. So for, for everybody here, just a quick overview of our site plan. We do have six buildings that we are proposing. As a reminder, Buildings five and six, which front along Old 41, those will be commercial uses. Buildings one and two, which are along the most northern boundary, those would be the light industrial uses. And then Buildings three and Buildings four are those car storage condos that we've been speaking about. Those are the least intense uses of the site, closest to Benita Isles. Since the first reading, we did receive, um, two letters that should be in your packet or distributed to you from neighbors who watched the first hearing as it was playing on TV and offered emails of support. In one of those email correspondence, you will see a Facebook post that was shared with me to show how involved the community has been. And then I did also check in with both, um, residents that sent those emails to make sure that I could, A, share them publicly, but also so that they were aware that these would be shared with their name on them. And both residents were happy to share their name because they are in support of the project. One of those residents is a commercial developer up north, and she complimented how much outreach there has been about this project from the start to the finish. So since first reading, we did include a new, um, depiction for everybody. This would be what the landscaping would look like with that fence that we've been speaking about. So you see the landscaping, you see the fence. Eventually, that fence will, unfortunately, though it's beautiful, be covered by the landscaping once it comes into maturity. But this would be that back of building number four, that closest to residential. And to highlight that further, oh, there's, there's the pretty fence if we really need a picture of it. And then to highlight that just a little bit further, we did have our landscape architect provide a line of sight from the Benita Isles community. Flipping back to the previous slide, this was the first slide that was shown at our first reading. We added the second one from Benita Isles to really show the, the view that they're getting. They're getting a landscape view. They're not necessarily getting the back of the building. Um, once that landscape is grown in, they have their own landscape buffer requirement. We're having an enhanced buffer requirement. So really, they're gonna be looking at greenery, which would be a really nice compliment to the neighbors that are existing there. In addition to that, as, um, staff has spoken to, we've made all of the, the concessions were made be- between zoning board and first reading. Staff is in agreement with all of the uses that have been discussed. We still have all of them there, should you wanna review each one. But I will, I will highlight that neighborhood outreach again, that the, the design of this site plan actually stems a lot from the community. As you'll see, we held a board meeting, a voluntary meeting in July of 2024, where we talked with the neighbors to say, here's what we're proposing for the site. Here's the mindset behind it in terms of you have that heavy industrial to the north. We wanna eventually get it to a less intense use closest to your residential. Here's what we're proposing. And that's where that level of support started and has continued through every layer of this process, that we've been discussing this with the neighbors. We've kept them in contact with both myself, but also the developer themselves has reached out personally to make sure that they feel comfortable with this. And that's where we've gained that support from the neighbors, is by being transparent from the start. And I think that speaks highly to both the developers who will proceed with this project, should it be approved, but also just to the team that's put the effort behind it. Staff has been involved from the beginning. Staff has worked great with us to make sure that the uses protect the city, but also provide a very nice project for the city. With the variety of uses that we are proposing, it does allow for a lot of flexibility, but it does bring that job market in and creates the jobs that we want for people when they're living and playing and staying in the city of Benita. I will, um, I will pause there and open it up for questions, but I just really wanted to highlight the continued efforts of communication with the neighbors and also that, those two renderings that really show what these, these buildings will look like from the residents that we are trying to protect. And I can assure you, they will be protected. I'll pause there if you have any questions. As Francesca mentioned, we do have our entire team here of consultants. Should there be any questions regarding the first reading, but if not, I'll leave it to the board. Thank you.
Any questions or go to public comment? All right, public comment, any registered?
I have no registered.
All right, anybody that would like to speak on this item from the public? All right, seeing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon. Deputy Mayor Purdon, how do you vote? Yes, how, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Motion, motion carries.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Board, we appreciate it, and we look forward to the project.
All right, item seven, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon. How do you vote on the consent, approval of consent? The consent agenda?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Number eight, Mayor and Councilmember items, Councilmember Corey.
No, is, I, I can assist.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, this is just a small item. Uh, this, the Village of Astero put out a nice map of the city, uh, listing the, uh, communities by district, uh, gated communities, other communities and so forth. And so I asked staff, how difficult would it be for us to put together a similar map for Benita Springs? Because oftentimes, people are confused about what districts they're in, and they'd like to also know what other communities are in their district. So, uh, Arlene took it on, and then, uh, staff's been working on it.
Yep, I just wanted to, you know, general direction, there's some additional items we look in, and we wanna see if not, I think it was the idea of not just gated communities. We look at historically what neighborhoods are identified, and then if there would be the desire of council that that be put on to communications or website. That, that was the direction we.
I, I would sugge- yes, I think that's great. Makes a great idea. But I think the, more importantly is, the priority is to get that on an app-based thing on the phone, uh, before you do, I mean, in conjunction with a website, because I just, th- that's predominant use is, is cell phones and so forth, so.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Do we need a vote or just?
No, I just, general direction and acknowledgement of the council, the, the project that the staff will be taking on.
All right. Derek.
I have one item for you tonight. The, um, opioid agreement we entered into, uh, just a few months ago with, uh, Lee County, with, uh, respect to the, the funds, the program was, we would give fun, our funds that we received from the settlements to Lee County to work on local programs. Uh, we had an agreement with that that also included the, uh, state of Florida. The state of Florida would like us to tweak that agreement a little bit. And so it's essentially, instead of assigning our funds and Lee County's funds to the state of Florida, they prefer that we assign our funds to Lee County, and then Lee County assigns what they need their funds to the state to then be put back into the program. So it's kinda more like a Scrivener's issue, we need to be addressed. The same agreement, just taking out the state. Um, I would like to ask authori- authorization to present that assignment to, uh, the mayor for signature.
Do you need a vote or just?
A vote would be preferable.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon. Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
He's not present, it's.
Mo- motion carries.
All right, City Manager items.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council, our finance director, Lisa Roth is here with, um, back on April 16th. Uh, staff was directed to obtain the, um, S and P bond rating, and we do have the results of that, which will also be released by, um, by a press release by the bond agencies. And we have a brief presentation, or we could, um, as brief as you like the presentation, but it is important for the public to hear the information, as it will be released by the, by the, by the agencies as well.
So tonight, we have, as outlined in your green sheet, our financial advisor, Julie Santa Maria, here. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for having us and, for your patience.
Sorry about the long wait.
No, no. Thank you for all the great work you do. Yes, that'd be great, thank you. Okay, as, um, we previously discussed, ratings provide an independent valuation of the city's financial position and ability to repay debt. The adjacent table provides a summary of the investment-grade ratings categories, which are from AAA down to triple B minus. Uh, the highest rating category of AAA is very difficult to obtain, and very few Florida governments are rated AAA. And, uh, we requested, uh, that S and P provide an issuer rating back in July. And we worked with administration and staff to provide a lot of information to S and P and responded to a list of their questions. We had a conference call with them, and, uh, they came back and assigned an issuer rating of double A plus, which is fantastic. And it is just one notch below AAA, which is the highest rating that could be obtained. S and P currently relate rates 65 Florida municipalities. Uh, 14 are rated AAA, 13 are double A plus, and 38, the majority, are lower than the city in the double A to A plus range. And this provides detail on the different cities that S and P rates in Florida and the different rating categories. Some of the factors that they mentioned in assigning the rating is the positive financial performance, sizable available reserves, proactive management, and very limited debt and liabilities. Because of the city's growing economy, they expect that these trends will continue. And, um, they have supported stronger general fund financial performance than many similarly rated peers. And the rating agency particularly highlighted the low fixed costs and limited liabilities of the city. They did state what could make the rating go up, and there are some economic factors that are a little bit lower than some of the AAA-rated peers. And if those went up, they could increase the rating, and what could make the rating go down? If the city's available reserves declined materially on a sustained basis, or if the city was to take on a large amount of unanticipated debt that they would view, that would weaken the city's, uh, financial profile. So in conclusion, the rating of double A plus is excellent, and it's a very strong, reflects very strong financial position of the city, and it's excellent liquidity. And we recommend that the city continue its strong practices that lead to this rating.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I'll just make a comment. I'm, you know, I was pleasantly surprised with the rating. It allows us to, right now in the current market today, issue, if we had to, 20-year bonds, uh, for about somewhere between 4.25 and 4.4%. More importantly, it, uh, it backs up what we've been talking about with respect to, uh, needed reserves, uh, and carrying a, a proper level of reserves going forward. And so it infuses a little bit of, uh, financial discipline on us and future councils when it comes to budgets and tax rates and so forth. So I think it's, it's very positive, and, uh, I'm glad we went through the exercise to get it.
Any other comments?
I'll just say thanks, Chris, for bringing it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next we have the August financial report, but in essence of time, if you wish, Lisa can give the abbreviated version, or we could roll that into the next meeting as well.
Yes.
But we did, the, I, there's one, uh, item we did wanna discuss is, we were hopeful to make the second meeting in November, an evening meeting, um, and start our, uh, budgetary process of doing our CIP workshops in our November meetings, and then our first meeting in December. So you would only need to change, uh, the, the meeting in, the mid-meeting in November to, uh, 5:30, and we would have a four o'clock start on each of those to begin the CIP, um, workshop process.
So the first Wednesday in November?
No, the sec- the first, the second Wednesday in November, so, um, November 5th is. November 5th is regularly our evening meeting at 5:30. We would ask for a 4:00 PM workshop. And then November 19th is typically your 9:00 AM meeting and we'd ask that that be moved to 5:30 so we could do a 4:00 PM workshop and a 5:30 start.
Both are evening meetings with an early start.
Correct. And then the December 3rd meeting is already scheduled for 5:30, so we would do a 4:00 PM start. I think we would significantly get through the majority of the strategic priorities. Additionally, we'll be providing an invitation to the Wonder Gardens to participate during Nicole Perino's Parks and Recreation's CIP so that that can be incorporated in your discussion and, and planning as well.
Sounds good.
And the rest of the financial report, you can?
Yes, yes, you have it presented before you in your packets. So you can call me if you have any, any questions.
So it will be also on the website and then we'll do a highlight of that at the next meeting as well.
Thank you.
The next item is for community development, to receive the presentation on the building fee schedule and provide direction to staff.
Good evening, Speaker Council. I will be brief. I, I did go ahead and provide some updated slides in your packets. So I do have it available also on the screen in case we want to share with members of the public that still might be watching from afar. I don't know, never know. But what we brought back was you asked for us to compare some additional jurisdictions. So we went ahead and gathered that data for you and also provided those fee schedules for you as part of the backup. So with that, let's go quickly through those. So we added the city of Cape Coral, city of Naples, Lee and Collier Counties. Previously, we did provide the schedules for the city of Fort Myers and the Village of Astero and that was included in attachment two of the green sheet. We provided the slides for comparison. Just want to go ahead and remind everyone that fee structures do vary by jurisdiction. So we did our best and added footnotes just to explain why the numbers might look a little different and why it's kind of difficult to go ahead and make a straight apples-to-apples comparison. And then also a reminder that each jurisdiction has unique revenue structures and expenditure that are due. So again, just making it more difficult to do apples-to-apples comparisons. But with our fee schedule proposed adjustments, the main changes that we are seeking for your approval this evening is to update the ICC table valuation data from the 2008 to the 2025 February table. We want to reduce the remodel discount from 60% to 50%. We are increasing some flat fees, again, to cover those costs. And we are introducing two new flat fees for temporary certificates of occupancy and changing contractors. Because those steps do, it, it is a cost service for the department that's not currently being captured. We updated this slide for the typical single-family residential example and added in those additional jurisdictions that you asked us to look at. So you can see for the most part, we're still competitive with the Benita, Astero and Fort Myers. With the city of Cape Coral, the city of Naples, and Lee County, the way they calculate their building permit fees for those types of building permit types, they're based on square footage. They don't use a value-based tool. So again, it's, it's hard to kind of give you a real comparison. With Collier County, they do use an ICC table value method, but it's for, from 2006. And then what they do, and Greg Smith in our office called to verify, is it's on a per-review basis. And then they charge you separately for each other sub-permit that is needed, such as a trade permit, mechanical, electrical. And then they charge you individually for each inspection you call in, every single time. So at the end, you get a bill. So again, how to really make that comparison, it's, it's very difficult because of their fee structure. We also did the same methodology with that commercial permit example. So, so again, you'll see how we have the value-based fee structure for those jurisdictions. But again, with Cape Coral and the city of Naples and Lee County, it's, it's all based on square footage. And the same methodology applies with Collier. It's, it's, it depends on how many trade permits you need to pull and how many inspections you're going to call. So really difficult to make the apples to, or, or the apples-to-apples comparison. And again, we had those notated fields at the very bottom just to go into additional detail of what those costs are. For the flat fees, again, a little difficult to kind of compare based on different fee structures and we do have those notated for you as well. So I would say for the most part, we, we are competitive. With the Naples example and the Colliers, it, it's hard unless you actually know what your contract amount is, what the square footage might be. So it, it, it varies by example, but we feel pretty confident that we're pretty much in line, but at the end of the day, we, we do our, we're proposing these changes because we need to cover those costs. So the direction to staff that we are seeking is to receive our updated slides. If you have any questions, I'm happy to drill down some of those details for you. And then we did prepare a draft resolution for your consideration with those fee changes based on the last meeting that we provided. Any questions?
Yeah.
Laura.
Are we ever going to have electronic filing?
I know there are discussions ongoing right now for, for that.
Well, shouldn't we add in, is, would there be a flat fee to do that? Or, so we could do it now?
So these fee adjustments do contemplate permitting system upgrades and training and that's one of the purposes that you can utilize building funds for.
Okay, great. Looking forward.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, just a quick question. We talked about a gap of between fees assessed versus expenses expended around, I think it was 450 to $550,000. With these adjustments, will that eliminate that gap?
We do believe that it will near the gap. And again, with the annual, I mean, we, as we explained last time, finance is always monitoring that building fund balance.
Exactly.
But we're confident that hopefully we won't have to be in front asking for fees to cover those costs and if we look at it annually, we'll make sure that we're in line and we're competitive.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need a motion to?
Well, I think the direction they're asking is the resolution they submitted. If that's of interest to approve, that's, or.
Motion to approve?
That, and that would implement the fees. So that's, that's what we want to make clear.
We're approving it as submitted by staff.
With the resolution, yes. You would be approving the resolution, which would increase the fees, yes.
Is that directly now or we're approving to put the resolution out there so it can go through its due course?
So a resolution is one hearing. And it has been advertised in accordance with the requirements because it is a resolution. The effective date we were proposing was January 1st because that gives us time to go ahead and provide notification to the public and also make those changes in the permitting system timely and to test it and make sure we're ready to go at the first of the year.
But that is the direction of council. So if you wish us to come back to the next meeting with a.
But we can vote on it tonight.
You can vote on it tonight, either way.
Is there a motion to vote on this tonight?
I made a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
In a second, alright. Roll call.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
I did want to advise, he did say that he had to leave the meeting virtually.
Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
The last item is a presentation by community development on monthly activity. We're happy to post that on the website as well and to provide a greater, in greater detail the next report. You can combine information.
We're busy. We can go into detail if you would like.
Nope. We're tired.
Yeah. Thank you.
Electronic submittals. I know there's conversations going on, so we just need to push that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Great presentation, John.
Never heard you do better.
Yeah, but the only item that I did need to make sure, I reminded everyone, is that Tuesday, October 28th at 9:00 AM is the Lee County delegation meeting. We submitted a request to be on the agenda. Mayor Mike Gibson will be the representative for the city of Benita Springs. But both myself and the assistant city manager will be in attendance as well. And we will be submitting the legislative priorities to Representative Esposito, who is hosting the delegation meeting.
Do you get one minute?
I think you get less than that.
Thirty seconds last time, so.
Yeah, very short.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, mayor and councilmember reports. Jim?
I had the pleasure of attending a two-hour historical preservation board meeting last night. Three takeaways from that session. One is that there is still a passion relative to Good Bread. Several of their members did go ahead and view the DPZ review and said, oh, this would be great to go ahead and integrate that facade of the Good Bread into one of those 56 options that were presented. So that's just saying out there, I think we probably need to take action as to clearly one way or the other on this Good Bread thing. Two, McSwain House. Jackie James came in and presented as the new president of the Historical Society. Basically gave a state of the infrastructure of the McSwain House and it may result in a grant request. There are, there were severe issues that had been identified with both termites. The floorboards underneath the porch or whatever you want to call it in front of the place, as well as vapor barriers located underneath the flooring of the house. So the charge back to her from the preservation board, get your direction together in terms of what you need and, and what might come forward. So that is something that is on the table with them. And for all intents and purposes, that's enough for tonight.
Thank you, Jim. Nigel?
Yeah, just two things. One was that if you remember the, I'm sorry, the Fort Myers or I'm sorry, the TDC was offering us a free mural, including all expenses. But we had proposed the back of the ban shell. They decided that that was not an appropriate location because it wasn't highly visible. So we countered with, recently in the Art and Public Places Board was in full agreement, the literacy council building. And, and we were, as a city, we were going to do a mural on one side of the building. Well, they went and looked at it. It's just a preliminary offer. They would do both sides of the building and cover all the costs of that. Literacy council obviously is thrilled if, if that goes through. So again, there's no money out of our pocket and it would be money that we're not expending on a mural that we can do in a future project. That's number one. Number two is recently, and I brought it to our city attorney's attention, I would ask all of you, the boards, committees that you're involved with, board members, committee members, if they have something negative to say about the city or staff, sure wish they would bring it to our attention first and not put it on Facebook and YouTube and everything else. Just inappropriate, so. They have a responsibility. They're representing us. They, they want to say something negative, it should be to their representative or staff, not, not social media.
Thank you. Chris?
Just to update, where the railroad right-of-way project stands, yesterday, the Collier County Commission approved the, the commitment that was promised earlier, but finally delivered of 7 million. Impplied in the motion that passed the 7 million was authorization to when it closes, to provide the full 14 million for the closing. But at this point, they're wanting to go on record with the 7 million, which match, matches their 50% along with Astero and Benita Springs. Secondly, and probably most important, is that Seminole Gulf Railroad, the Fay family, has requested a meeting with Astero, Benita and Collier representatives to discuss the present shortfall between the monies that have been committed and the, what they want is a purchase price. And the way they did that was to say, we want to figure out ways we can monetize the difference. And by monetizing the difference, that would include ideas as, such as continuing the utilities fees, the road crossing fees, taking a va, somehow the, the group would provide the air rights should they want to, you know, gain revenues from the construction of cell towers. Could include taking a percentage of future naming rights with respect to rest stations and so forth. So it's all in a, in a, to sit down and discuss what would work out to, to fund the difference because we haven't received any, any commitment at all from the, from the county or the state. So they want to meet in early November. Astero has already agreed to meet, so has Collier. So without objection, I will go to that meeting and see what they have in mind, what makes sense for them, see what might make sense for the rest of us and then give you a report back at the, one of the November meetings. So that's just the update on that.
That, that makes sense, as, as long as they're not collecting money from us for our road crossings. Because if we're going to put the bill for buying it, I don't think we should still have to keep paying. But, you know, other, other utilities, things like that.
It's all about making the deal, Mike.
Yeah. Alright, Laura?
Well, yesterday was officially Charlie Kirk Day. And I'm very proud of the president for doing that. Florida gas prices are at their five-month all-time lowest. And lastly, of other things, but I'm just going to say the county, Lee County Commissioners voted in favor of purchasing an additional 20 acres here in Benita Springs to extend crew. So more green space.
Jamie?
Yes, we have great news. The battalion chief of Benita Springs made incredible strides and he has been transported to the Shepherd Center in Atlanta where he's receiving rehabilitation. And if you want to see a pretty incredible moving video, it is posted on Facebook. Him leaving the hospital and actually walking onto the airplane and able to do that. So that's on Facebook if anyone wants to see it. That's it.
Thank you.
And Mike?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't want to hold everybody, but I just want to say, you know, our thoughts and prayers go to the Greenwell family after the passing of Commissioner Greenwell. Alright, we'll move on to public comment. Scott, you're, Scott, you're the only one left. You got anything to say? Alright.
Not yet.
Okay, no public comment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We're adjourned.